Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starbuck.
President.
Councilmember Bridge. Councilmember Ball. Mayor Potem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
President.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the other two council members aren't here because they conflict out. I just want you guys to think they're playing hooky somewhere. We're at the wine bar, right? And we have, the police chief is the city manager today, so everybody better behave. And you're here to consider the inclusion of the City of Lompoc Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District. And... I believe we're gonna, go ahead, staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, and staff. I am Chrissy Donnelly, Management Services Director. I'm going to be presenting on behalf of Jeff Malavi, who is not able to make it to the meeting in person today, but he is available by phone if we have any legal-type questions. I just wanted to review really quickly, the staff report has saying that we are here to consider the inclusion of the City of Lompoc and Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District. And staff recommends that the council consider whether to adopt Resolution 673325, consenting to inclusion of Lompoc in the Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District for the district's initial five-year term. Just a quick summary, this was at the request of Councilmember Vega. The mayor has, and staff have brought this item before City Council again today. At the council meeting on January 21st, 2025, council did vote, but did not achieve majority support for the, of the full council, which would require three yes votes, as required by Government Code Section 36936, to consent that wine tasting facilities within Lompoc's territorial jurisdiction be assessed as part of the Santa Barbara County Wine Improvement District. So we're here to discuss again, and I have, we have invited Allison Laslet, the CEO of the Santa Barbara Vintners, to come and do a quick, a short presentation. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to her, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, nice to see you again. Thank you for having us back.
I'm getting there. Sorry. Beginning. There we go.
I'm Allison Laslet. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Vintners, which is the trade association for the wine industry in Santa Barbara County. We're here to discuss a wine bid, Wine Business Improvement District. I think we're all familiar with tourism districts. A business improvement district is a geographical location. In this instance, it is a wine region. So Santa Barbara County itself is considered a wine region. And within that region, we have seven AVAs, which are American viticultural areas. A business improvement district is driven by an industry to fund their specific benefit. So in this case, it's to increase sales through marketing and promotional efforts, to attract new visitors to the wineries, to engage and educate the community, the industry, and the government, and to build the region's high-quality wine reputation. So why the wine bid for Santa Barbara County?
Can you turn the volume up?
Yeah.
Can you turn the volume up? Who controls? Yeah. We got the power. There you go. Try it again. The microphone's really short.
Oh, oh, oh.
They're trying to get a longer one. Something like that, I don't know. Get too fancy for us, huh? Like Saturday Night Live or something there, right?
How's that? Better? Okay, why the wine bid for Santa Barbara County? Primarily, it provides predictable and stable funding. We have seen how funding has helped this organization in our region before when we received two marketing grants, which totaled almost $800,000. Grants, however, are not predictable funding. They're not stable. But it allowed us an opportunity to see the benefit of marketing dollars. We received those grants and ran them from 2020 to 2023. They were awarded in 2019 and 2021. We went back and looked at growth from 2018 to 2022, straight through COVID, which is when we ran one of the grants, and we saw 48% growth in retail sales during that time. There were many reasons for that growth, but certainly the money that we were able to put towards marketing contributed to it. We've also seen Temecula, which is one of our competitors, south of Los Angeles. They have implemented a wine bid, and they saw an 18% increase in visitation from September 2022 to September 2023. This was not a time when other wine regions were seeing an increase in visitation of that magnitude. So what is the assessment? It is not a tax. This is a business-led initiative to fund the wine industry. It does not fund the government, and that's an important distinction of this. So the design of our particular assessment is 1% on all direct-to-consumer sales. These are retail sales, so anything that incurs California sales tax would also be subject to the assessment. It was chosen this way because that's a particularly auditable amount. When the wineries write their sales tax and figure them out quarterly, they will use the same number to figure the assessment. We did not want to unduly burden the wineries when they had to do accounting for this assessment. So included in this assessment is tasting room sales, wine club, events, food, merchandise, corkscrew, anything you would buy out of the tasting room. It does not include wholesale or out-of-state sales. How much does it cost? It's 1%. So you can see various bottle prices on this slide. $44 is highlighted. That is the average bottle price for a bottle of wine in Santa Barbara County. Our bottles range here, $20, you would pay 20 cents, right up to $75 bottle of wine, 75 cents, and so on. How much money will it generate? So retail sales are estimated at $165 million in Santa Barbara County. This is an estimate. We've been very transparent about that. We expect that this will generate approximately $1.65 million in funding for the wine bid. We do know average sales for each city in the county, though, and I handed you statistics, information from HDL, which is the tax consulting firm that collects taxes for Santa Barbara County and the rest of the state. I provided that information to you, and I also put information for the public out with these documents. So this estimate here of Lompoc representing 10% of sales is based on the three years before COVID, 2017 to 2019. We also ran the numbers again, which is what you have and what the documents are that we placed in the back, for the five years from 2018 to 2022. And Lompoc again represents 10% of sales in Santa Barbara County. I raised this because it's, I've been asked, and there's been some confusion about just how much Lompoc represents of our total sales. So that data is available for everybody. We did reduce our, when we thought Lompoc was not included in the district, we reduced the 1.65 number by 10% and resubmitted it to the county. So how will our money be spent? Marketing brand awareness and PR is the primary purpose of business improvement districts. It's certainly where the bulk of our money will go. There will also be events, community engagement, government education, industry education. But what's important is that the funding generated by this assessment must benefit the payer. So it is exclusively for the benefit of the wineries that pay into the assessment. How the money moves, this is important. I think this is particularly important to your city. So the wineries may pay the assessment themselves, or they may pass it along to the consumer. That is the choice of the winery. HDL, the tax accounting firm that I referenced earlier, is the consulting firm with whom we will contract to collect the assessment on the wineries. This is so that they can audit, that the wineries are all paying their fair share. This was very important to the Vintners. They decided that if everybody was going to do this, they wanted it to be fair. We also wanted an organization, a company, to collect this that was very knowledgeable about taxes and about the amount of assessment that each winery should be paying. HDL collects the funds. They calculate them. They then pay the Santa Barbara Vintners minus a 2% administration fee. The association implements the programs according with the management district plan, which is on file with the county. HDL will also handle any collections. That is not something that we would do. So this third party manages all of the finances. It's subject to audit by a nonprofit accounting firm, and also we have to report out to Santa Barbara County annually. So support for the wine bid. 60% of the wine industry has signed petitions in support of the wine bid. Our wineries in support range from literally our smallest winery to our largest winery. So this is a collective effort driven by the wine community to better themselves. And each of them have individual reasons why they are supporting it. I would say primarily for the smaller wineries. It's because they will be able to access a marketing budget that they could not generate or have the opportunity to access themselves. So more support for the wine industry. The wine industry and the hospitality industry are inextricably linked. We know this. We see restaurants, hotels, tourism businesses working with the wine industry. They support the bid. I think it's also important to know that this will impact our local economies significantly. So I also gave you a study that was done in 2023 by the California Wine Institute on the economic impact of the wine industry in Santa Barbara County. It is $1.7 billion. Given that our sales are right around $170 million, for every dollar spent on a bottle of wine, $10 is spent in the local economy. So part of what we are interested in doing is by promoting our wine industry is growing our local economies as well. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You take 2% to audit the wineries. So how often are you guys being audited?
Well, there's an annual audit requirement in the management district plan.
So reading your documents, there's actually, you give a, some sort of reporting you do to the county. But what we have here says staff recommends additional county oversight, including submittal of an annual audit financial statement.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a recommendation. But nowhere in here does it say you're mandated to an annual audit.
Are you looking at the management district plan that was submitted to the county?
I've looked at everything that was presented to me, but nothing has a mandate for an audit, nor did you say you'd have an annual audit.
So that is included, and that has been submitted to the county? And I will get you the documents that say that. But we are subject to an annual audit for this. It is something that we have agreed to with the county.
Okay. Subject is a little bit, anyhow, that's one of my concerns. In our case, the City of Lompoc, over the past, we've kind of gone down with a housing group a long time ago, the grand jury, lack of oversight, and then something more recent that's kind of blown up in our face a little bit, so.
Yeah. So our organization will be conducting an annual nonprofit audit by an accounting firm every year. That is an agreement that we have made with the county. The county requested it as well. And then HDL will also be annually auditing the assessment.
Okay. This is not in any of the documents that I have that states that, so.
I will find it for you.
That's okay. Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Vega?
Allison, thank you. I'm actually here just to represent our locality here because I'm just like anyone else. So if I was in the wine industry, you know, I need to be convinced also that this is my benefit. I get it. It's a, it's a hope that we're going to get more business based on the marketing. But I think some of the winery people, and I'm not, I haven't spoken to anybody, really. So the voice, I remember I asked at the last council meeting. The reason I wanted to have this meeting again is because there wasn't enough information out. It was kind of a surprise, okay? And as I mentioned to you, everyone can count to five on the council. But when you counted three, it left me holding the bag here. So it's really important that I ask questions as far as each winery that wants to be involved. I remember one of your answers was they can always join the board. Now, what's the makeup of the board? And, you know, being that Lompoc's a little bit smaller and the outlier, so to speak, is it going to be based on volume and sales? Or how do you get on the board? Or is there an opportunity for a board member based on their locality to be on the board?
Those are great questions. So that hasn't been designed yet, but there is, at the moment, there is no requirement of volume or sales to be on the board. There is also no location requirement to be on the board. So once this is passed, the, every winery is considered to have an opportunity to participate at an equal level. So any winery is eligible to run for the board or to sit on committees and to participate in any of the activities. Now, that said, there will be over 300 members. We have, we have our annual Vintners Festival. It's not possible to have 300 members. We will have to find a way to maybe split the wineries in two, and they go every other year to the Vintners Festival if they want to. I would say that we have never had an experience where all wineries that are members of the association want to participate in that. So there's certainly a learning curve in some of the participation thing. But it is not, it is never intended that somebody who does more sales has more access or somebody from a bigger town gets more say or has more representation.
Gotcha.
This is a regional business improvement district.
Is there a term on the board, as far as you know, since it's not completely finished?
Currently, we have...
So would it be a term, or would it be a five-year term where you'd have to die for someone to get in?
Yeah, currently, we have two, you're eligible for two two-year terms. So the longest you can stay on the board is four years right now. And our board, I believe our bylaws range from, the board can consist of 13 to 17 members. So these, once the, once the new district is formed, these are conversations that will happen. But in anticipation of this, we have been very clear that this is a regional organization that is meant to represent all wineries equally.
So you said the individual wineries can absorb the cost, or they can put it on top now? Would that be a, can you put it on top of the sales tax? Is that legal?
It is. It's required that it...
So you're going to put 8.75, so for instance, that's our sales tax. You can do a 9.75 sales tax? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's actually above the sales tax line. So it's bottle, bottle assessment, sales tax is calculated. So there is sales tax on the assessment.
I got you. I got you. Yeah, that's kind of tricky there.
So I think from what I've learned, the majority of Vintners plan to, they are the ones being assessed, and they plan to pay that assessment themselves.
So for instance, any of the wineries that, you know, let's just say you want to hold your cards tight, so to speak, and you have an audit. Is there a form that they're going to be able to submit? Or are they going to have somebody there going through their file cabinets and stuff? I mean, do you know how that's going to work? When the company that's hired wants to see their gross sales or their money? I mean, is there an easy way to do that, or is it kind of invasive?
Well, it is easy because the figure lines up directly with their quarterly sales tax figure. So the 1% assessment will be based on that same number. And since they are paying their sales tax and the assessment to the same company, which is HDL, it will be very easy to see what that 1% calculation should be.
Now, again, if, let's just say if they wanted to be a part of this as a group. I remember we were talking about some of the people that may be borderline on this because they're afraid they can't afford it, but they're afraid to get into a five-year contract. I think you, on the phone, we kind of talked about that. Maybe you could explain, you know, the way you explained it to me and how that structure would work? Say you got a business that's going out. You know, I've heard different stories that there's people here that, maybe they're already talking about moving away or just moving away, you know, just or going out of business. How would you guys handle that as far as the five-year contract?
So the assessment is on the retail sale of wine. So if you no longer do retail sales of wine in Santa Barbara County, then you do not have to pay the assessment. So that is, that is the structure of the assessment. If your winery, let's say you converted from direct-to-consumer sales to 100% wholesale, you would not pay the assessment. If you do 10% direct-to-consumer, which is not really a thing in Santa Barbara County, but let's say you did, you would only pay on those 10% of sales.
I got you. I don't know if anybody else has any questions. And after that, I'd love to hear from anybody out here because they're the ones in the business. So I'd love to hear that, too. So thank you for being here.
If there's no more questions, stick around. I'm sure we'll do something as we progress through. Let's...
I'd like to have this mayor on a little more of an open format. So if these people do have some questions, we can get them answered.
Let's get some public comment and see what happens. Who wants to be first for public comment? We'll open it up, and we'll give you three minutes.
Mayor and Board, how are you doing? My name is Keith Sarlos. I am a Vintner in Santa Barbara County. I am for the bid, and I'm 100% direct-to-consumer sales. So this is going to affect me massively indirectly. I think one of the things that we're losing sight of possibly is the fact, the goal of the bid. The goal of the bid is not to assess and take money from wineries. The goal of the bid is to have a collective where we all come together. We all have a unified front. We get to market our region, Santa Barbara County, together. The strength of all of us doing that is every oar in the water pulling in one direction together. If we do that, our goal is to reach millions of people that live right over this hill. Southern California, that's our market. That's where most of our sales are going to be coming from. And if we can market to them directly and say, hey, we're here. Come on over. Enjoy a beautiful day. Because Southern California versus right over that hill, there's a big difference, and we all know it. And that's why we all live here. And if we can invite them here, what we're looking for is a few thousand people a week. There's millions over that hill. And if we can target, market them directly and get a few thousand of those people over here, this assessment that we're talking about will pale, pale in comparison to the increase in sales. Through 2020, I believe, to 2023, we had a few grants which totaled $800,000 total. And we increased sales by $50 million. That's $50 million in sales tax. That's $50 million to the winery. That is $150 million in economic impact because we're open from 11 to 5. Those people are coming here. They're buying food. They're staying in hotels. Lompoc actually will disproportionately benefit. Even though you're only 10% of the sales, you have hotel rooms. You have places to stay. You have restaurants. You have things for people to do beyond 11 to 5. And because of that, they will come and stay. They might only spend a few, you know, $100, $150 at a tasting room, but they're going to spend $300 to spend the night. And they're going to eat three meals. And they're going to go do this. And they're going to buy gas. And they're going to hit the shops. So the disproportionate benefit to what we're bringing you, we're at, we're saying 1%. You guys get 10. That's the difference in all of this that we're all really losing sight of. The goal of this is to increase sales in a shocking and dramatic fashion. Temecula holds nothing against us, and they increased their sales by 18% because they got to go fish in our pond. And this is us cutting off that fishing hole. This is us going after our consumers, bringing them here. Our prices will go up based upon supply and demand. It's very simple. So my hope is that you guys would vote for it. But what we want is an enthusiastic support across all wineries together. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this matter. It's so important to our wine industry. I am Becky Berry Owathen, co-owner of Fox and Winery here in Santa Barbara County. The Wine Business Improvement District will benefit the Santa Barbara County wine industry, including our wineries who have located here in Lompoc, because Lompoc welcomed them. You may remember there was a time when it was hard to find a place to put a winery, and Lompoc said, come here. That mattered to many startup businesses. Another way you can support them is by voting to include Lompoc in the Wine Business Improvement District. It's not just the wine industry that will benefit from the funds assessed through the wine bid, but also the entire hospitality industry of Santa Barbara County and the City of Lompoc. Through the wine bid, the Vintners will be in a position to partner with Lompoc's tourism efforts. A win-win for us all. When you consider your vote today, please think of us as your partners. Thank you.
Who wants to be next? There we go.
Hello, everybody. Well, I disagree with this. I don't think we should do it. I appreciate what everybody is trying to say, but I don't agree. I think that, I never got a chance to vote, and I'm pretty small. So I'm going to say, let's not raise our prices so less people come in. Let's keep our prices where more people come in. Also, my question is, who are you going to market to? Do you guys know who you're marketing to? Because I would like to know how you plan on doing that. To prove, like, are we going to get more people? Can we handle more people? I would love more people. But I worked for three different wineries, and each one says no. They don't agree with this. And so I also don't agree that we should be forced to join something that I never joined to begin with, nor have any other company. Well, one company I work with has joined and has let that go. So I'm just wondering why I'm forced to do something that I don't agree with. Thank you.
Is there any TV volume? You got that figured out? He's checking it right now. Are you checking on the TV volume? Somebody over there? Hold on a second. We'll see what's going on. No volume on the TV at home. Hold on. We have to replay it all over. Just kidding. We'll have the reruns later, right? I think Victor went to go see what's going on in there, so hold on.
There was audio for a while. I'm not sure when it cut out completely, but it was coming in spotty during the presentation.
It did at the last council meeting, too. The last hour went out.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I've been told. And then went down to almost nothing, and then we had that foghorn that came off at the end of the meeting.
All right.
Working on it? All right, we'll keep chugging on down. Come on down.
I just had questions. I don't know if anybody can answer it or not, but I was just perusing your website. And so you're charging the 1% on the bottles, but I saw on your website you also have dues. Okay, so you also, I mean, the top-tier due on that thing is $12,000. It goes down to like, to mom-and-pop shop, as small as you can go, is 150. If you're charging dues, why would you need to charge extra money on the wine bottles? I don't, I... That's just my... I don't, I, that's just my, scratch my head. And then I would like to have seen, you know, just, just for me, you know, I really have no say in this. I'm not part of winery, I'm just a citizen, just viewing this stuff, but, you know, if I'm sitting there looking at this, okay, Vintners and stuff, you're coming in saying, join my club, I would like to have seen a breakdown of where my money goes to. Okay? Is, are we paying any salaries besides this consultant within this realm here? And how much of this money is going to his salary? Because I know many of nonprofits out there that have CEOs out there making money off of these people, you know? So what's going on there? You know, just be a little bit more, you know, transparent in that zone, especially if you're trying to convince these smaller organizations to join. You know, where's my money going to? Where's the money from my customers going to? And that's just me saying, hmm, I'd like to know.
Was this, this whole packet's available online, correct? Is it out there as well?
It's not.
It's not out there? Other packet? So there was a chart in there that referenced your questions.
Nobody else want to talk? If you are, please come up.
There you go.
Thank you, council members, for taking the time today. This reconsideration is, it's powerful. This is a really big deal. My name is Britt Zodevich. I'm a winemaker, a business owner, and a mother of a 14-year-old, excuse me, 14-month-old. I'm 40. I've been in the wine industry for 21 years. I'm in the middle of my working years. I've been, I'll be paying taxes for quite some time. It's an exciting time for me to see this bid proposed. I believe in the power of marketing dollars. I went to Cal Poly, this is what I studied as a small business owner. I am hopeful and I am excited. So 60% of wineries are in favor in that they've signed petitions. So if you're in that 40%, it's possible that you're a hard no. It's possible that you're not selling direct-to-consumer, and you didn't want to be, you know, inconvenienced with sending the paperwork in, or it's possible that you were overwhelmed, because this is a change, and that can be hard. I've been a member of several local wine organizations, chambers of commerce, including Lompoc, the Santa Rita Hills Wine Growers Alliance. A common issue plagues a lot of these organizations, and that can be just the divisiveness between them. I really do believe that we would benefit from everybody coming together, and I believe that we really do need to pull oars in one common direction to have that, that force. One of the themes that I've seen in going to a lot of these meetings at local city levels, the Santa Barbara meeting, the Solvang meeting, I got to see a couple of presentations about marketing dollars and how, you know, the visit, visit Solvang, visit the city of Santa Barbara, how that's really driven traffic to the cities and to these local businesses. There were a few business owners who got up and said, hey, I was on the brink of bankruptcy around COVID, and these marketing dollars have really saved my personal business. So I think that marketing is something that is really important to continue to bring traffic. And Lompoc is a huge, this is a gateway for us. The Santa Rita Hills is such a core component of the Santa Barbara wine region. It's really hard to get something from nothing, right? So is this going to be a perfect system in year one? I don't think so, but I'm happy to give it a try. I believe in these people. I think that, I do plan on becoming more active. I'd love to get involved with the subcommittees, and that is a possibility. You can absolutely show that you'd like to be more involved. I do believe this bid stands to benefit member wineries, community programs, and a huge number of local businesses. When tourists come visit, they eat, they stay, and they come back. So I'd encourage all of you to consider and imagine the tourism possibilities and to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Phil Carpenter, I'm the general manager at the Santa Barbara Vintners. I work with Allison. I spoke with you guys last time. Really happy to be here. I want to just answer a couple of your questions. Yes, the dues structure goes away once this bid gets in place. There will be no more dues charged. Your assessment will count as your membership to this organization. So the dues structure disappears, everybody's a member, and we all move as one. That is something that I am selflessly most excited about, because I deal every day with people that are members and aren't, and I want to promote everybody. So, and I also just want to make a quick note that I'm a Lompoc resident. I grew up in San Diego, was a deputy sheriff down in San Diego. I had the privilege of working for the city of Lompoc. Chief Martin and I practically hired me with Chief Mariani. I chose this place. I love Lompoc. When I was doing my security checks in the jails, I dreamed of being in Lompoc and tasting wine and seeing all my friends here, regardless if they're for this movement or not. I am your personal liaison for this. I didn't say that the last time we met, but I, and I kicked myself that I didn't have the opportunity. So I just wanted to use a little bit of that time so you realize that you do have somebody that you can count on here in town as well. Thank you.
We wouldn't normally do this, but Councilmember Vega has.
Yeah, the reason we're doing this is for the information, and I do want to give somebody a second chance, because it's not about me, it's not about, it's about all of us, you know, and then a five years goes by, so I just don't want to see anybody possibly struggle more than they have to if it is a positive thing. But I did get a couple of comments from people in the wine industry, and a couple of them said they were members of the Vintners Association, and they're not anymore because they didn't feel any benefit to it, so maybe you can respond to this, why, why this tax and this marketing venue, what has changed, okay? Or if, has something changed, okay? Just being a member, you got, you must have gotten some sort of benefits, but how does this change the tax?
So, it's multifaceted, if you ask me that, to be honest with you. Membership with the organization is, it fluctuates. You know, some people step in, like you said, our dues are anywhere between $12,000 to $1,800 a year, $3,600 a year. Some people, they can't afford those dues. They want to be with this organization, but they can't afford it, so they have to make a decision at the end of the day. So they come in because they don't want to, they can't afford the dues. Some people just think regionally, and they're just like gung-ho and want to be part of this region and promote it. So they come into the organization for that sole purpose, and then sometimes that dwindles, and they want to go away. We're funded drastically lower than a lot of our neighbors, right in Paso, up north. We do our best to, to make an impact for everybody. At the end of the day, we want to represent the whole region. Our elevator speech that Allison and I say all the time is to promote and protect. And it depends on who we're talking to, because some people want to talk advocacy more than marketing, and some people want to talk marketing more than advocacy. So, but we spend a lot of time advocating, you know, speaking with, with you fine folks, speaking with people in the county. We just worked on an ag enterprise ordinance so more, more events can happen on farms. So these are things that we take a lot of our human capital, but we don't have funding to make these big impacts marketing-wise. So we barter, we do in-kind, we donate wine, we do everything we can to market this region. That's why these grants were so amazing. It was a case study to show how effective we could be if we had some money. And the thing about those grants was that it was 100% marketing. None, not a penny of that went into our operations. Didn't, didn't fund my, didn't fund the payroll, didn't pay me at all. It was 100% funding. And when we had that money, there's a, there's an industry standard report called the Silicon Valley Bank Stat, you know, um, yeah, Status of the Industry, or State of the, of the Wine Industry. And we made such an impact that the organizers called and said, I don't know what this is, but you guys are the only ones sowing a bump in tourism. What is going on? And it was because we had these grants and because we were advocating so hard. So that is, if you look at that time period, when we actually had money to market, we were very effective. So it, it's proven that we can be as, a massively much more effective organization if we are funded. Allison is amazing. We go and we, we get RFPs, we'll meet, get the best marketing people we can, so we can keep up with our neighbors.
So let me ask this question again. That was a great, it was great for the honesty. So if someone joined the Vintners before, and the dues were unaffordable at the time, it means not much was impacted by their business for this because of lack of funding. Is that what you're saying, kind of, sort of?
I would say it's that, and, you know, the other thing is, we get this, what have you done for us? You know, my tasting room, and I struggle with that, because I do want to put people in their tasting rooms, and I think this bid will help us. But a lot of our work is to think regionally, and is to promote the whole region, to get as many eyes on this region, and to people to notice our region. And as much as I want to send people directly to their tasting rooms, that's not quite exactly what this is all about. It's just to make sure people know we're here, and then get people to the areas to taste as much as possible. So I have to explain that to members sometimes, you know? I wish I was their personal, like, you know, liaison, but by getting this, this will funnel into that effect.
So for instance, if a winery here in Lompoc, obviously not part of the wine bid, they, they're joined now, okay? They're part of this?
Yes.
How aggressive is your schedule with this? Do you guys just take the money and then, or what's going to happen here, okay? How is the marketing going to come out, and in what time period? Let's just use Lompoc as an example. Is it going to take a year to get Lompoc on the maps? Is it going to, what's going to happen here? Because I've heard different comments about the hooks here in Lompoc. Sure, the wineries and everything are really good, and once you get them here, the people, but I've heard comments, whether it's true or false, I'm just going to be honest, just like you.
Fine, yeah.
And they tell me some of the people come here because the TOT tax is lower in Lompoc. Whether that's true or false, I don't know, because that could change at any time, okay?
Understood.
So you hope that it's, that's not the, the only hook that we have here. You know, I don't know if I buy all that, but I'm just telling you what I've heard from people in the wine industry.
And to tell you the truth, I don't understand it myself, because to me, this was always my, my place, where I started my journey at. So this is, I've, I always have seen Lompoc as the epicenter. That's because, like, when my wife and I got into the car in San Diego at 4:00 in the morning, we were driving straight here, you know, and I would get excited when I turned left at the Home Depot. So we always just stayed here. Now, we have always promoted Lompoc. Now, some people have said we're not promoting it. That's not true. It's on our website everywhere. We have a touring route, all about Lompoc already. It's, it's up and running, it's like in the top 20 most visited pages on our website, okay? It gets visited a lot. So as, as does a lot of the places where to stay and where to eat. Those are just, those get visited as much as the winery pays. So we have promoted Lompoc. Members are, in our social media feeds, during COVID, we interviewed Kyle from Montamar, other different people from the city. So we, like I said, we have to think regionally, but we do our best to be as fair as possible to promote all our areas, all our cities, all our AVAs, all our members. We go out of the way, we track it with our social media team.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to ask that question again. It doesn't sound like, how soon would, would Lompoc be on the map and everything here, okay?
Yeah.
You guys have a plan for that, for people that are, you're going around, and all the cities have signed up?
Yeah.
So what would be the plan, okay? Because Lompoc, obviously, you know, hey, as of last meeting, weren't, wasn't going to be part of this.
Correct.
So basically, what the decision is tonight, do you guys want to take a shot at it for five years, and if you don't like it? You know, that's a long time. I mean, I know, I know, I think you were the presenter that said it's only five years, but we could all be dead by, by, I'm looking at my life expectancy.
God, I hope not.
No, I hate to say it, let's be real.
No.
We've just had this conversation here.
No, no problem.
About 20 and 5 and 30-year plans. You know, sometimes we have to scale it down so that we can feel the benefit and don't go out of business, because there is some pain. There's some pain, I'm sure there's pain. If people can't pay their dues, and they're counting on you to use the marketing dollars and the grant money to save them or help save and raise, it's going to have to be sooner than later.
Absolutely.
That's the question I'm asking.
Sure, absolutely. And you're talking to the person that will probably get everybody online as soon as possible. I know, I have, I do the registration forms, I communicate with all the members. I am super excited to just, like, the moment this passes, I start communicating with everybody. And I just say, hey, fill out this form. I will build your site on the website personally. That's my job. That's what I am so excited about this, is that I can now reach out to all the people that aren't members, talk to them, go meet with them. I'm, James and I are good friends, by the way, and I know he's not for this, but, and we've had great conversations, but I will get people like him on board. I know for a fact. And because I am going to go out of my way to get them integrated as soon as possible. If I have to stay up 24 hours, seven days a week, I will do it. I practically do that now anyways. So meeting, building their presence on the website, getting their, getting their page on the app, getting them into the, into the fold of our social media, and into our, into our new marketing. We've done this before with the grants, doing a lot of big digital campaigns. These are all things that we are quite ready and really nimble that we can zim into these.
Well, it'd be great if, you know, as independents, you know, I look at it as everybody has, there's all selling the same product just about, with little different flavors, a little personal touches.
Absolutely.
So how do you get everybody on board to put their oars in the water, to go in the direction that might help or save? I think everybody's a little skeptical, because, as you said before, there wasn't enough money.
Mm-hmm.
This is funding for your direction now, correct? At least you were honest about that, that you told me about that.
Yeah.
That you didn't have enough money to do anything before, okay? So people that couldn't, could not pay the dues fizzled out, and you had to go find somebody else that could afford it.
Right, or just do it themselves. I mean, the Vintners in this, in this region are used to wearing about 50 different hats, you know? So it's hopefully to alleviate them from having to wear so many hats, and for us to do that for them, to make an impact for them.
You know, I think, I think for me, you know, if I wear the shoes here, I think as an advocate for the people here in Lompoc, you want to make sure you're just not a number. Once you give your money and you take my money, guess what? 1-800 or leave a message and whatever. You get what I'm saying, though? I think people want that personal touch.
Absolutely.
Not everybody wants to talk to a computer, and oh, you paid your dues, or you're late. Everybody calls you when you're late, but how about the interaction? Can you kind of give that experience as far as what you've done, as far as people that have concerns? Is someone calling them back, or is it all? I'd like to know that part, okay? So they can know that they can call you or do something and see what's going to happen.
Right. No, I mean, I, if there's one thing I'm very confident with, is that I'm out in the community quite a bit. People see me on my Instagram, I go in, on my Facebook, I go out in correspondence, I am always in the community, talking to people. My wife and I, even on Sunday, Saturday afternoons, we pop down to Sweets or Sellers, or we pop into Montamar and talk with people, talk with them, talk with members here. I'm always, to me, that's the best part of the job, is to close the laptop and go out and talk to the Vintners, you know? Sometimes we have really frank conversations. Like you said, I've paid you these dues, what have you done? And I have to have these conversations and explain, you know? It's the good and the bad. But that, to me, is the best part of the job, you know?
I think, I think, sir, that the mayor, the last time we had this meeting, he asked a pretty plain question, he's here. Once upon a time, they had a Vintners event here, and it never came back. Yes, it was COVID, and we have all kinds of stuff, but you know, we love, I think Lompoc would want to be part of the event center. Yeah, you know, we, if you give them a notice, or, I'm sure we could fix up something where it looks a little bit better, or whatever, in certain parks. I know there was a issue with traffic once upon a time at one of the events, but I think they want to be included, you know, not go to Santa Barbara for everything, you know?
No.
But I'm just, I'm just telling you what I think.
Absolutely. And I mean, completely, we'll take that into consideration. We have just had a setup at Vega these past couple of years that worked out, has worked out great, but to say that we won't consider it in the future, I don't, it's, I think it would be great. I mean, like I said, I live here. I'd love to sew off this place. So I'm not saying it's not going to happen. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Are you saying it would happen? You said it wouldn't. We consider it.
Yeah. I mean, I'd have to consult my CEO here, you know?
So you're, you would have a paid position if this passes, or you still, would you not be paid, or what?
So you would have a paid position if this passes or you still, would you not be paid or what?
Well, I mean, Alison, I'd work for Alison for free and work for this region for free. And my wife would be the one that would be unhappy with me. But I would have, I would hope that my job status would contain in the new organization, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure for the record that we held it, okay?
Right.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Eric Wilson. I'm the winemaker for Longoria Wines. Uh, I was here last time and I'm here again to voice my support for the Lompoc, including itself in the Santa Barbara County Wine Bid. Uh, I'd appreciate you cut off your phone while I was talking, please. Excuse me. I'm talking to the councilman who's on his phone while I'm talking. You're all right, you can carry on. I mean, is he not going to listen to what I have to say? All right. Uh, as I'm sure you've heard, every other municipality in Santa Barbara County has voted to join this bid. This bid, bid is going to happen. And I implore you to not miss this final opportunity to be a part of it. Failing to do so will severely damage small businesses in your city and ones managed and staffed by your constituents. Our team at Longoria is small, but we're close knit. In fact, most of our employees graduated from either Lompoc or Cabrillo High School. Uh, this includes our entire production team, our general manager and majority of our tasting room staff. The local wine industry provides a legitimate opportunity for people who grew up here to stay and earn an honest wage. But we need help. I can't staff empty tasting rooms forever and we can't make wine we're not selling. You say in five years, we might all be dead. In five years, Lompoc might not have a single tasting room. Because if people aren't showing up, we can't keep paying and having them open. You know, this bid is going to help shine light on our local industry, showing a wider audience so it makes it unique and what makes it special. Uh, I know the last time you said you're not all into the, into the wine, um, but we all went to school. We all know that 90 plus is an A. 90 plus is excellence. Longoria and many others in this room have all received 90 plus ratings from national and global wine reviews. As I told you last time, world-class wine is already in Lompoc. Why would we not want to promote that here? Why would we not want to celebrate that here? Being from Lompoc, I know there's always friction with Santa Barbara and the worry that we'll take our money and promote only themselves. Uh, but in this case, approving this bid will let the town of Lompoc fight for itself. If we're included, we have a voice, a seat at the table, and we can make that voice heard. If we're excluded, I truly believe it'll be hard to regain that voice ever again. I seriously, seriously hope you vote yes. That's all. Thanks for paying attention. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor Mosby and Councilmembers Vega and Starbuck. Uh, given your reconsideration of the wine bid vote and in the spirit of inclusion and transparency within the Santa Barbara wine community, please make the following stipulations with the Santa Barbara Ventners in your resolution to approve the wine bid. And I know I sent these to you this morning, but if you have any questions, would be a chance to, I can clarify. Santa Barbara Ventners provide the wineries located in the city of Lompoc with the HDL report on the wine sales for each Santa Barbara County jurisdiction that was used for their 2024 Santa Barbara Ventners bid projected annual assessment of 1.65 million budget. Now, I know that there were some figures presented tonight, but I'd like to see the report. Um, Lompoc wine sales contributed significantly, and I believe it's more than 10% to the 2024 projected wine bid budget such that the Santa Barbara Ventners aggressively pursued the city of Lompoc to be included in the wine bid. The 2024 HDL report may reflect wine sales as high as 25 to 30%. And I'm not the only person that believes that. The 2024 HDL report data should be the baseline for auditing purposes going forward. All future wine budget, excuse me, all future wine bid budgets should include a jurisdiction breakdown to provide accountability. Lompoc wineries should benefit commensurate with the contribution to the bid wine sales budget. For reference point, there are 72 distinct wine brands registered with an O2 ABC license located within the city of Lompoc this month. The second stipulation, Santa Barbara Ventners provide the wineries located in the city of Lompoc the technical and/or financial support for every winery requiring POS system integration for transition to and maintenance of wine bid collection such as Orderport, Shopify Bloom, et cetera. Winery owners should not incur any expenses for collecting the wine bid assessment. And furthermore, our customers should have full transparency with the wine bid assessment and the additional tax placed on it for their orders. Santa, third stipulation, Santa Barbara Ventners provide wineries located in the city of Lompoc a written commitment that they will be able to participate in all Ventners events without prejudice to pay-to-play schemes that have been implemented by the Santa Barbara Ventners for preferred events in the past.
Let her play. I'm letting, I'm letting you continue. We let everybody else, so.
Okay.
We're trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I understand. Um, oh, where was I with my thought? So in the past, they had a pay, pay-to-play, um, for some preferred events. Now, we won't have, we may not have a dues anymore, but I'm concerned that there will continue to be this pay-to-play scheme for preferred events. So that becomes very exclusionary. Um, I also request a stipulation that Santa Barbara, um, Ventners provide tasting rooms located in the city of Lompoc a written commitment, um, or excuse me, tasting rooms located in the city of Lompoc which have distinct needs from winery production facilities. A written commitment that they will have representation in the new Santa Barbara Ventners Board of Directors. Uh, another stipulation would be that the Santa Barbara Ventners provide tasting rooms located in the city of Lompoc a written commitment that they will create unique marketing strategies for cool weather Lompoc that is distinct from the San Ynez Valley. Skip the summer sundress, please. And the final stipulation would be, Santa Barbara Ventners provide the city of Lompoc written commitment that Lompoc will be invited to host the annual Ventners Festival every three to five years. It's just fair, you know? We are, at a minimum, can be contributing 10%, but I believe it's going to be more than that. Thank you for your consideration of these issues that are very important for your 72 licensed Lompoc wineries. You have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Justin Charbonneau. I was here last time. I'm one of the few Lompoc natives that have lived their whole life here in Lompoc. I can still remember the first time when I realized Lompoc was becoming a wine industry. I was, uh, I was working for King's Furniture in the summer of 1999. Old man Jim King, I don't know if you guys remember him. We had a delivery out off of Santa Rosa Road and, uh, once we passed, um, the Walnut Orchard and we rounded the hill or the turn and I saw the Sanford property for the first time as a young, impressionable 17-year-old. And I knew agriculture was important to Lompoc, but I didn't realize we were going to become a wine region. Boy, was I, you know, a little understated in thinking we'd become a wine region. We are one of the premier wine regions right now. I own a small winery, Temperance Sellers. Temperance is actually a nod to Lompoc's humble beginnings as a temperance colony. I'm sure you can appreciate the tongue-in-cheek naming of a winery, Temperance. But I am probably about as small of a winery as they come. I produce around 500 cases, which is very, very small. I'm one of those small wineries that, I was in the Ventners Association and then I wasn't able to be when the dues were changed. With the bid structure, I will be able to be in the Ventners Association once again and this 1% assessment will subsid, uh, will be, you know, they'll use that instead of my dues. So, yeah, we have to pay, but that's also counting as our dues to be in the Ventners Association. I can also, as a small winery, I can speak to the benefits of being in the Ventners Association. However, Kate, I do agree with you. We should have the Ventners Festival here every three to five years. We absolutely should have that for Lompoc. Some of the other things the Ventners Association does for us is anytime there is an event, a wine event in Santa Barbara County, somehow, being the Ventners Association, they're a part of it. And they always, they always check to see, you know, if they have a last-minute spot to fill, they'll hit up one of the little guys, come in, here's a chance to come, you know, fill in for this, uh, for this event. Um, I've had Phil several times give me, send me email contact information on leads for sales that have resulted in sales. Um, we do membership education nights. In fact, we're even doing one Monday night at Brewer Clifton if you guys would like to come and check it out. Um, you can see how the Ventners operates as an organization, the kind of things we do for our members. It would be great. But I'm. For us and I really hope you pass the bid. Thank you.
Who else?
Hello, I'm Kathy Gerbach. My family has been, uh, living in Lompoc for four generations. And we are very proud of the fact that members of our third generation, uh, went away, left the area, went to college and returned as winemakers and, uh, people who work in the wine industry within this community. Um, I myself am retired from my, uh, main career and I currently work for two of the tasting rooms in this area. I fully support the bid and I fully feel that Lompoc should stand behind, uh, those individuals who have, uh, grown up here and, uh, the families that have struggled and chat with the challenges there is to the economic community in this area, but have persevered and prevailed and are now engaged in the wine industry and would love to have the support of the community of Lompoc behind them and behind their efforts. This is a great place and it just seems that it gets overshadowed. And this is our opportunity to be equals with the other parts of this county. Santa Barbara, San Ynez, Santa Maria, uh, those, those other communities have already agreed to this bid. And it would just be a shame if Lompoc is the one community in Santa Barbara County that's left out. Uh, we need the support of, of the council and the whole community behind the wine industry in this area. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for, oh, Lisa Liberati, Sweets or Sellers. Thank you so much for reconsidering. I'm so happy to be here tonight. At a very early Santa Barbara Ventners Association, uh, event where they brought in people from all over the world, uh, to come. I remember somebody asking me, well, you don't, you don't live here. If you could make wine anywhere in the world, where would it be? And I said, well, I can make wine from anywhere in the world and I choose to be here. And we've always hoped for so much support. And I get that some people have a beef with the Ventners and it isn't always perfect. But I think if everybody is involved, then everybody has a stake. It's good to have all the oars going in one direction, but if we're all in the same boat, we're all going to have to work together to resolve those differences, which I think is a good thing. I believe that this marketing money could be so helpful to elevating our entire region. And I firmly believe that a rising tide lifts all boats. But I fear that if Lompoc decides to exclude itself from the boat, that we may drown. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Schultz. I work for Paly Wine Co. and, uh, I come here more as a wine consumer than a wine production person. I'm, uh, someone who's in support of the bid and maybe I just, I hear like a lot of the micro talk about, you know, the nuts and bolts and the dollars and the cents. But to me, it's more of like a, uh, like a macro view of kind of my first time here and then coming back here to work here. So my first time here, I was, I was an intern at the Anasito up in, uh, Santa Maria and I came down here a couple of times. And, you know, and I think, when I say, I think about the wine ghetto. And the wine ghetto is such a fun and vibrant place. I mean, every single place was filled with tasting rooms. Some place, some places had two different, two different winemakers in one tasting room. And it was great and you could just go from spot to spot and there were people walking around. It was like a really, really fun time. So I was a little surprised when I got hired and came back in 2019 that it was just a different situation. It was beginning to turn into almost something like a ghost town a little bit. And, you know, since then, it's kind of only gone that direction. And I, I'm not entirely sure why, but the way I look at it is, you know, this feels like this is a lifeline to, uh, to help us out. And I feel like we're in a time where we might need some help, so, you know? Maybe it's time for us to get some help to help us out.
Anybody else?
Thank you, members of the Lompoc City Council for the time and for reopening the debate. Uh, my name is Steven and this is my 32nd year in the Santa Barbara wine industry. Uh, I've never been more confident, confident that this is the best decision for consistent and sustainable funding for all of Santa Barbara wine country to promote itself to wine consumers all over the country. I think it is important to note that the wine industry wants to apply a 1% self-assessment on direct-to-consumer sales. This is an industry group of wine professionals trying to organize themselves together to better fund their industry. For those opposed, because they do not believe or trust the Santa Barbara Ventners, I want to say this. Everyone will have an equal vote regardless if you make 500 cases or 50,000 cases. Get involved to see how professionally run it actually is. Don't make decisions from the sidelines when you do not know what is going on. I was one of those people until I got involved. The organization is more transparent than ever with diverse board members representing all winery sizes and even non-wine industry board members. Please move past your grievances. These views are dated and were biased. The organization is not the same as it was from 2000 to 2016. For those opposed, because it is too much for the consumer, I want to say this. We are talking 42 cents per bottle on average or 11 cents per glass. Wine is a luxury beverage that people love. Those who already buy it can probably afford the nominal additional cost. And I think most consumers would support the reinvestment in our industry to make it more successful and to improve the entire experience for everyone. For those opposed in general, the industry has never been more competitive and is only going to get more difficult. There are headwinds everywhere. The Santa Barbara Ventners budget is only around 400,000 annually compared to the Napa Valley and its $10 million budget. We are outgunned every which way. We need an organization like the Santa Barbara Ventners to provide the strategic direction, the leadership and advocacy that our industry needs. Because we do not agree, agree on everything and how to approach everything, we need someone more than ever to herd all the cats. I do not understand why you would not want more people coming to this region. Please put yourselves in the shoes of over the 60% who want this to pass. What do they see and what do you, what, what do they see and that you don't see? Seven, eight, seven of the eight cities have already approved it and this is going to happen. If Lompoc removes itself, you'll be erased from the maps of Santa Barbara wine country. And I just can't handle and get my head around, why would you even want to consider this loss of exposure? Like Lisa said, uh, rising tides do lift all boats. And I think the smallest producers here are going to benefit the most. the most. Please vote yes to be a part of the Santa Barbara wine bid. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Right, we'll close public comment. Um, I think one of the problems I saw here was I did have people call, and they were afraid to come up here. Just in case things passed, it'd be held against them in their oppositions. But what I've seen, the, the biggest concerns is that, um, you know, it's an assessment without representation. I think it's probably one of the biggest concerns. Um, but I think that you've expressed, you could come back up, and maybe you can answer a couple of my quick questions. You know, you heard somewhere about true representation, and that each area is a little bit distinct. So how would you, how would you recognize if you're, especially in the summertime when Lompoke has kind of put a sweater on to go wine tasting, and you're over there, and the other side there's staying warm? I mean, are, are you gonna be marketing everything as a whole, or you're, um, specific towards the areas? Because Lompoke is unique in itself.
Uh, I think, um, I think each of the cities is unique.
So it's a, it's a, it's a challenge for us. Um, I will say that no city will get preferential treatment, and no city will be discriminated against either. Um, it is something that we already do. We get press calls, for example, about, uh, we're looking for wineries that are hidden gems. Well, all of our wineries don't fall into that category. So we will provide a list of 30 or 40 wineries, and then the press chooses where they want to go. So I think a part of it is also, one of the things we say about Santa Barbara County is there's something for everyone. I think there are plenty of people who don't want to go and taste wine in 105 degrees at the far end of the San Ynez Valley. Um, there are people who want to come here. It is our job to figure out how to market the entire region. So if Lompoke is part of the region, then it's our job to figure out how to market Lompoke. Um, we are not going to, uh, as I said, pay special attention to any particular city. We're going to bring out the characteristics of each of them, um, because they're all different. Uh, our, we, we do have a website, I think I mentioned last time. It's one of the largest websites in Santa Barbara County. Um, we already have city trails for each city. We, we will have a page for each winery. Um, and I envision having a page for each city with the characteristics of that city so that people can choose. One of the advantages of Santa Barbara County is that we do attract the repeat visitor, which is a great visitor to have. It's somebody who forms a relationship with the region and wants to come back. And we have so many different kinds of wine and areas to discover in Santa Barbara County. I view that as an asset. When I arrived, it was not viewed that way because we didn't have one varietal to hang our hat on. But, um, I think it's both a challenge and an asset, and it's something that we will have to do moving forward.
Okay. Just trying to commit you a little bit to this, if it comes back in five years, that, you know, that they'll be questioning this to move forward or not move forward or whatever. So, you know, there was another question about, um, the equipment that it might be needed to-
Oh, yes. Let me answer that. Um, I did write a few things down. So the first thing I wanna say, I'm gonna go through some things I wrote down.
Please.
Um, the equipment changes, any changes that the Vintners have to incur, incur with the addition of the bid, is paid for through the bid funding. So that does not land on the winery itself. That is something that, that is reimbursed to the wineries. The other thing is, um, I don't actually have access to the data that was used to, um, calculate the weightings. I, the reason you have the city data and the HDL reports you have is those are the only ones that I have. So I know that the data that was used was fiscal year 2324. Um, I have requested it, but because it's tax data, they have not given it to me, which is their right. They used to give me the information in the past, so I gave you all of the information that I have. Um, so those were those two things. I also heard about the Vintners Festival. I wanna share that the Vintners Festival is one of the moneymakers for the association. I think you've heard quite a bit about some of our financial struggles over the years. We have had to follow the money. When we came to Lompoke, it was through a grant that a Vintner got us, um, through Explore Lompoke, and it was for $20,000. So we were able to come to Lompoke. The next year, that grant was not renewed, but Santa Maria offered us the same grant. So we had to move up there. So this festival has had to move because we have relied on it to make money for the association. The last two years when it was at Vega Vineyards, it, it turned a greater profit than it ever has before. Now, with the assessment, we will be able to reconsider that festival, I think. But right now, it brings in a significant amount of money that the association needs and is able to use to promote the region. So moving it is expensive, um, it's difficult, and we lose money every time we do it. That's why we try not to move that festival around, but we have moved it to follow the money. It's just been a business decision.
Might be able to have a smaller event or something over here?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We good?
There were a couple of comments by another speaker here.
Huh?
There were a couple of comments that were referenced by another speaker here. I was wondering if we referenced all of those.
Yeah, I think we got most everything that was-
And do we get, uh, response back?
I'm concerned. I think we got commitments. I, I would, uh, Councilmember Starbuck, I think, I could make a motion on something. I've, you guys ready for something? All right. So in, in our resolution already, we've locked in a five-year comeback because it's a little vague in the, in the-
That's fine.
But also as well that I would add in there is that there would be a, an audit, an annual audit, independent audit, because it is a little vague in the-
That's fine.
Little hazy underneath here.
Yep, yep.
We don't want to go back in front of a grand jury-
Sure.
On, on any of that. So those are the two things, along with the, um, you know, approving the, uh, our resolution of, uh, 6733 parentheses 25 with the addition of the annual independent audit.
Mayor, Mayor, I, that, Chris, you're right here.
There we are.
Sorry. Um, I do have a, a note from our attorney, Jeff Malabi, that did say that the, at this time, there is not really a mechanism for the city to, um, impose any kind of additional stipulations within the resolution, that we either need to consent to allow the wine bid assessment to apply in Lompoke or not. Um, there is no way to apply the special conditions to our consent. Um, now, we can ask, um, Ms. Lisette to make verbal promises on the record, but there would not be a legal enforceable way to remedy or enforce that. Um, but it would be something that could, um, be held to at a five-year, um, timeline, that if the verbal commitments were not met-
When was your last, when was your last communication with the city attorney?
Um, that was at 2:51 this afternoon.
Um, my understanding is that the consent, you can actually make some of these changes to the resolution.
Okay. Uh, uh, you know, what we might do, it, I can, I can call Jeff right now, and if we, if we take a-
Mine was at 3:04 today when I asked him, so.
It might be a timing issue. He might be up against-
I think you have until Tuesday technically, so, at least, why don't we take five minutes, if we could, and make sure just to confirm that?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I have something to say to you.
You could go talk to him if you wanted.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, five minutes.
Thank you.
Taking five. Housekeeping. I can, yeah, I'll finish with my motion. Let's go, see what we got. So city attorney says I can make that motion. They don't necessarily have to honor the audit aspect of it, but it, we definitely put it in the record. And hopefully they'll add it in the, uh, aspect. It's already there, it should be no big problem, right? What's wrong with transparency?
Put into the record?
They're in the record here, they're not in the resolution. We can't mandate-
No, no, I got you, but I wanted to be part of-
I think we got most everything out there. I mean, they, they said they-
Or do we, or do we need it refreshed or what? I wanna make sure-
We can't put, we can't put it in the, in the resolution anyways. We just have it on the verbal record that it's out there. Okay? Right? So, there's my motion. Made motion. Right? Come on. Hello. There we go. Made a motion. Who's gonna second that one? That we approve Resolution 6733 that has the five-year must come back to the coun- our council for reapproval, as well as adding on the language of the annual independent audit, as well as everything else that's in the record that we've gone through today, which is standard.
I've already seconded.
I think I'll start back with a second. Any questions on the motion?
I guess my concern here is I wanna make sure the motions from the local residents here, any, any particulars that we could have added are in there, and I'll ask again. Okay, I understand for the record. Um, you did the audit, you had a couple of other concerns. I wanna make sure everybody's referenced here, okay?
The, the complexity of this is-
I understand it can't be changed, but it can be for the record, and Allison can note it.
Well, the whole meeting is alive for the record. If it doesn't, it can all be used in the future, and all along the bid process. So I think we brought a lot of the questions out of concerns that the community has. And I would say that at any time, that they could come back to the podium, and we can kick and scream for them, and definitely a lineup. It appears to me that, um, the, the question about the, um, the machinery and mechanisms being funded, that was a concern that was out there. They said that they would, um, not isolate out, Lompoke out in the advertising promotion and, and treat everybody uniquely the same as they are in, in market, not, you know. The Blake's, you covered that one. The, the festival, mentioned why the festival was with possibilities of something around here, but it was about following somebody who had offered you incentives. Maybe they could talk to Explore Lompoke again now that we know what that was. Explore Lompoke could entice them back. Um, so it wasn't, I know COVID was an issue. Why, they kind of disappeared all the way around for a couple of years, but then just started bringing it back. So they would look into that. Um, so the financial support, they clarified some of the numbers, which with an audit, we will definitely be able to see those numbers, to be more directly with an independent audit. So, and Allison said that there's an audit involved anyways. The... Everybody's gonna be allowed to participate in that. So I think the main concerns were there, um, on that one. So I would say, I believe we addressed it.
Mr. Mayor, Chief Martin?
Yes.
I wanna make sure, because there's a little bit of confusion going on, that the clerk is clear what your motion is, and that we're ready to move forward once you guys-
We're just deliberate, we're just deliberating after the motion, so that, all this is just answering deliberations on that. So that is covered, um, there's only two things that are added on this. One is already inside-
Okay.
The resolution, the second one, what is adding the annual, uh, independent audit. That's only second things that are on my motion. It's just deliberating before we call for the vote.
Okay.
So everything else here doesn't need to be added into the motion, just answering Councilmember Vegas' questions. Any other question? Do you wanna add anything to the motion? Substitute? I believe it's worth the risk. Like, you know me, I don't support taxation without representation or assessments without representation. I think we've asked them in-depth the questions. I think the public has, they're able to ask in-depth the questions. So I think they could, I think it's worth the risk for the five-year. We were able to lock it in, so if it does, it's coming back in five years for a vote again. Um, I think that they've mentioned in willingness to get along with the people, that's to make it work, so. Ready for vote? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
I don't want you guys to forget about fire and ice and brushes and blues. We got a beautiful mission. We don't always have to have a Vintner's- We don't always have to have a Vintners Festival.
And that passes 3-0 with two abstentions. There you go. All right, where are we now? Two more pages. So with that, we'll adjourn until 6:30 February 18th. Where's the ice? Where's the ice?